I assumed that's what I saw.
We have three council people here.
Yeah, how many?
Fay, Cahill, and Julie.
That's her name. Isn't that illegal?
I was wondering about that.
For you?
Nah. And you know, and the one guy stepped down, so...I don't know. But it is a public hearing, so maybe they have...that excludes them, I don't know.
But see, right now, they're communicating. They won't ever talk into each other. I mean, if you spread out.
Well, Cahill is up here with us, but I don't know.
Okay, we're gonna start in a minute or so here. So, um, thanks. And I understand that if you get tired of standing, there's also room just directly across the hall, where you can sit if you want to. All right. So, it's, um, six o'clock. The Maple Plain Planning Commission will start the April 7th meeting. And, um, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then, um, we have three, um, minutes from June, September, and December that, um, we have to approve or not. And, um, in looking at these, as Caitlin had pointed out, and those of you who know me know that I go through these things with my little pen. In the June 17th meeting minutes, on the second page, um, there's a reference down towards the bottom, the third, um, it starts with Fay. And, um, Mr. Fay was not present, so I think we were supposed to reference Caitlin.
I was not present either, but I'm listed as being present. I was no longer the rep at that point.
Right.
So I believe it was DeLong.
Okay. Is that what everybody else is remembering?
It's a while ago.
I know. Okay, we're gonna say DeLong since he was our rep at that time. Okay, so that should be corrected. Does anybody have anything else on the, uh, June 17th minutes? Okay. Then, on the September 2nd, um, minutes, um, on the second page of that, under the second paragraph, where it starts Chair Bliss, kind of in the middle, the applicant mentioned the pitch of the roof, which is actually down further, I think, um, and it would be, um, either say mention what the pitch of the roof was, and that it would be white, or just say the color's gonna be white because we talk about the pitch being 12 pitch down here, or quarter 12 pitch. So that should be fixed. And then, um, just a couple down from that, motion to recommend approval with staff notes, and I'm sure it was a reminder for someone, there's Surchin slash deCamp, 3 slash 0, and it's all, that particular thing is all in here by motion by Bliss, that sentence. So, I don't think we need to have, um, the other above it. And then, um, let's see. Also, um, going along, let's see, past C, it's in numbers, or letter C, up at the top of the page, the parking per setback from Highway 12 is, rather than are. And one of the things down here, um, also, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, like the fifth paragraph. Rothstein noted that the rear of the building has very, um, few or little windows. I'm not quite sure why we were talking about that. But also down further, um, there's a paragraph that starts, Bliss noted it would be good to add a small amount of lighting in the rear of the building, because it backs up against somebody, but they should still be able to have a light to get in and out of their building, so adding that. And then, on letter D, um, our dear council member DeLuca always calls these tortured sentences. It talks about sign permit review for a multi-tenant building, where a partial sign package at previous been approved for one tenant. I'm not quite sure what that's supposed to mean. So, um, just that it was previously, I don't know, I can't, I don't remember, but it was awkward. Did anybody have anything for that D in addition?
Just that, once again, the attendant should be amended so that it's Councilmember DeLong, not Councilmember Cahill. He is quoted in the minutes, so he was there.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, Chair.
Yeah.
When we're talking about September 2nd minutes, right?
Yes.
So, it says I'm absent at the top. But then, it says that I second the motion on the second page.
Was that the time we came late?
No, no.
You were in and out, so you were not absent.
Okay.
So, thank you. We'll put that back there too. All right. And then, we have, um, December 2nd. And, um, let's see, John DeLong, um, on that one. Lots back and forth here, um, let's see. They have cost of insurance. I think what I had marked on would be all right. So, did anybody have anything in there? No?
None in December 2nd.
Okay. So, then, um, with the corrections, we need to approve the June 17th, 2021, December 2nd, 2021, or September 2nd, 2021, and December 2nd, 2021, planning commission minutes. So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion based on the corrections that you outlined to approve.
All right. I second it. Okay, Barb seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike? You too? Okay. Good, thanks. All right. Then, we'll get to why everyone's here. So, all right. This is, um, new business. It will be a public hearing. It is, um, for Serenity Village Holdings LLC, who is the applicant, um, and going to be considering, um, following actions on 1520 Wyman Avenue, which is the old nursing home. Text amendment to the city zoning ordinance to create a conditional slash interim use within the R1 zoning district that would allow the proposed specialized care facility, a conditional slash interim use permit based on the zoning ordinance amendment to allow the proposed facility on the subject property, site plan review to consider renovation of the existing building and grounds to accommodate the proposed use of the facility. Now, there's a couple of things that we do when we have something like this. One of our staff, Mark, um, the city planner, will go through, um, and give some information. I will open, um, the hearing, and there'll be some guidelines for that, for those in the audience. And so, right now, what we're gonna do is we'll go through and do some of the information.
Great. Honorable Chair, Commissioners, the item before you tonight is a request by Serenity Village Care for the action items that were described by, uh, the Chair. And I wanna give a little bit of background on the property, kinda historical, then I wanna talk about the applications that are in front of you, and I wanna talk a little bit about kinda process procedure, because there are some things that the planning commission, um, may elect to do, which would, um, which would kinda alter exactly how much presentation I give tonight. And so, um, but I'll give high-level overview, and then we can go into more detail as the planning commission, um, requires. The property that is in question tonight is 1520 Wyman. There's two PIDs associated with this property. There's a north and a south parcel. Uh, the north parcel houses the existing facility, and the south parcel is a vacant piece. They are two individual parcels, so there's two PIDs associated with that. Um, but we are referencing the subject site, or the subject property, as both of those, uh, parcels. Uh, the property is Zoned R1, single-family residential by the city, and it's guided by the city's comprehensive plan as low-density residential. Uh, the north parcel is 2.53 acres, the south parcel is .99. So you've got a total of approximately 3.5 acres of, uh, property that we're talking about. The applicant approached the city about the possibility of reusing the existing facility and the associated grounds, uh, for the purpose of what they're referring to as a retreat center that provides residential recovery services for adults struggling with substance dependency. So when we started the discussion with the applicant about this particular facility and looked at zoning and land use, which is, is how we started looking at this, we noted that this property is Zoned R1, single-family residential. We also researched and determined that the previous use of the facility as an assisted and independent care, uh, or assisted with a small independent care, uh, facility was, um, considered at some point to be a legal non-conforming use, but there were no special permits, uh, there was no conditional use or, or other special uses granted, uh, that allowed the use of that facility. So that facility came in, uh, to this area underneath, um, a zoning ordinance which doesn't apply, or no zoning ordinance that had standards relating to it. That's important because when the, um, without any other special uses identifying what was approved, uh, we rely, um, kind of solely on then what's, uh, what was there previously. And as a legal nonconformity, uh, then there are provisions relating to being able to continue that legal nonconformity. What we've determined as a city is that there was a legal nonconformity that allowed, uh, essentially assisted care living. The applicant was not asking for assisted care living, and due to the fact that the building was vacant for longer than six months, the legal nonconformity went away. There was no, uh, legal nonconformity for any use of that building. So we really are now starting from zero, um, with the idea that there is no permitted use for assisted care, and the city, in its R1 zoning ordinance, does not make provisions for any type of use that's even close to the use that's being requested by the applicant. And so, in order for the city to consider, uh, the application of, uh, some sort of use of this building, the city would first need to change or amend its zoning ordinance. Specifically, it would need to amend what types of uses are either permitted, accessory, conditional, or interim within the R1 zoning district, to some other use that would allow the applicant's proposed use of this facility. So, the city then, um, first, in its, in, in kind of order of what it would want to think about or consider, would need to consider if the R1 zoning district, uh, the, the provisions for that should be amended to accommodate the use that's being proposed. The applicant made an application for a text amendment to the city's ordinance. Staff, uh, worked on crafting language that could be considered by the planning commission for, um, accommodating the type of use that's being proposed. The city typically would craft that language. The applicant did provide, uh, a significant amount of background to, to provide us with, um, you know, how the, the facility would be used, and we crafted language, which we think would, uh, accommodate that. Now, that language, um, could be, you know, in the draft format that we provided, or a planning commission can provide input, feedback, direction relating to the language if the planning commission's desire was to move forward with amending the zoning ordinance. The reason I, I talk about the zoning ordinance and its importance, cities have essentially carte blanche ability to determine land uses within various parts of the city. And so, the city has the ability to determine land use in this particular case, and whether or not the applicant's proposed land use, the language that has been drafted, should be considered for adoption by the city in the R1 zoning district. And so, we really have complete ability to determine land use in the R1 zoning district, and the city, um, without reason, really, does not need to come up with a reason. We can, we can essentially determine what land uses we think, uh, are suitable for any given zoning district in the city. There are some exceptions to that, I don't need to go into those, this is not one of those. Um, we have the ability to determine if this particular land use is an appropriate land use, a compatible land use, um, or just a land use at all that the city wants to contemplate. The other thing that I'll bring up as it relates to land uses, if the city were to say, we want to amend the zoning ordinance, uh, and specifically the R1 to accommodate this type of land use, once we amend the zoning ordinance and include a land use, and we can include it in several ways, I'll talk about that in a second, then, when, uh, somebody else would come into the city, um, and, and look at our zoning ordinance, they would then be able to utilize those land uses. Um, and, and if they could meet the criteria or conditions established in the ordinance, the city would then have to consider an application based on a much more objective set of criteria, uh, for determining whether their proposed use fits into the now adopted land use. The other thing with that is, if we adopt any changes to the R1 zoning district, it applies to the entirety of the R1 zoning district. So, um, it's not singular to this particular piece of property. It would apply to any, uh, property within the R1 zoning district that could meet the criteria that we establish within the ordinance for the particular type of use. With that, there's several types of uses that the city can consider. So, within a zoning district, the city can consider, uh, land uses as either permitted, meaning they are just outright permitted uses. For example, in the single-family zoning district, uh, a single-family residence is a permitted use. If you have property Zoned R1, and that property complies with the provisions in the ordinance, and you wanna build a single-family house, you don't have to ask for now additional special permission. On the land use side, you get to do that. And so, you can have permitted land uses, you can have accessory land uses. Those are typically things that are access, accessory to a permitted land use or to a principal land use. So something like a shed, a detached garage, um, those would be accessory-type uses. And then we have another category, which is either conditional or sometimes conditional or interim land uses. And those are land uses that aren't outright permitted, but the city would create a special, uh, category, category for that particular land use along with, um, specific provisions or conditions which would need to be met or satisfied in order for the city to consider that type of land use. And conditional or interim land uses have to go through a public process. So they have to go to something like we're talking about tonight. And then the city has to judge the application for that conditional or interim use based on criteria which we've already established in our zoning ordinance. So we list out criteria in the zoning ordinance for, um, considering conditional uses, and interim uses follow the exact same criteria, um, with one exception, and that is that we can with certainty determine an end date of that use. In this particular case, the, uh, city drafted language that would accommodate the, the requested use in the R1 zoning district as a conditional use. And so, rather than just considering a land use in a vacuum, we encourage the city to consider it in the context of the actual proposed use in the application that's before the city. And so, we ask the applicant to both, uh, submit an application for a text amendment, but also, on a parallel basis, an application for a conditional use permit. Excuse me, and then by default, conditional use permits require site plan review. And so, really, conditional use and site plan are two things. They're separate action items here, but, but they go hand in hand. The, the text amendment is the, its own item. And so, should the city consider the text amendment, um, and it has the ability to do that as something that, um, is either, has, uh, something they wanna, the city wants to consider recommending, or something they wanna consider recommending denial of, there would be then no consideration, and, and we wouldn't really need to get completely into more detail on the conditional use, because in order for the city to consider the conditional use, you first have to amend the ordinance. But we're bringing them on a parallel track. They can be acted on, on a parallel track, meaning simultaneously, or they can be acted on individually. And really, if you were going to recommend denial of the text amendment, you would recommend denial of the CUP on the basis that there is no, uh, conditional use in the ordinance to consider it. So hopefully that makes sense. If there's questions on that, um, I can go into that in more detail. But I wanted to provide that context and that background. I'm gonna provide a high-level overview of the, the text amendment first, and then of the request, so I'll go through that. But I'm gonna reserve the, some of the detail on the request and wait for kind of more guidance by the planning commission relating to that, if that is okay.
Yeah.
So, the, um, the applicant is proposing to reuse the existing facility. As I noted, the existing facility was, uh, has historically been used as, as an assisted and independent care facility. The existing facility has 69 bed spaces in four different wings, um, that include, uh, not only individual bed spaces or, or bedroom areas, they also include a reception area, office space, a chapel, and a kitchen area, as well as kind of a common space with some offices. There is approximately 40,000 square feet on one story, um, and this building has been, um, added on to over the years in, in several configurations, but the configuration on the screen is the, is the current configuration. What the applicant would like to do is reuse the existing facility, um, in its current configuration with limited exterior improvements and modest interior improvements. And so they would have and make minor modifications to the interior of this building for the purpose of accommodating, um, what they're calling a retreat center, which would be, uh, for the purpose of, uh, accommodating, um, uh, essentially a, a residential care for, um, chemically dependent, um, uh, clients of the center. So, because the city has nothing in its ordinance that's even remotely close to this type of use, and specifically within the R1, we don't have anything. We went out to look at, um, language. We always start with looking at what other people have done, so sometimes you don't have to reinvent the wheel. And then we tried to craft language that was more specific to Maple Plain, more specific to this area, more specific to this particular facility. Oftentimes, cities in writing conditional uses want to be as specific as possible and, um, as detailed as possible, so that the city has, um, the ability to, to, uh, vet potential uses based on some objective criteria. But also, um, if we know that this particular use is one that, that really only fits on certain properties, or fits in certain areas, or we think there's certain sizes, um, we try to spell those out. So, when we went out and we looked for this type of facility, I mean, we casted, we cast a wide net, we tried to find areas where we could, uh, find similar types of uses, and therefore similar types of, of, um, ordinances and, and the associated language. We ended up pulling from, uh, a handful of, uh, ordinances, and then between the city attorney and I crafted the language that is in the, um, in the packet tonight. I noted a couple of things, uh, kinda specifically about that language. One, we would need to define this facility, and so we have to come up with a definition of what this facility would be. Uh, the applicant gave us some language. We believe that the definition of institutional specialized care facility was what fit the, the, the use the best. It limits further by utilizing the term institutional versus just any facility. And so, we thought that, uh, this kind of specialized care, which is what this is, would be better defined so that it has persons voluntarily, voluntarily, uh, living on a temporary basis. We put a time period in there, um, which is based on kind of the, uh, treatment program that's associated with this, although this, we kinda went beyond that to try to provide a reasonable amount of time. And then noted that it is 24-hour, uh, per-day treatment, therapy counseling, um, and support for, uh, adults, specifically adults, recuperating from the effects of chemical dependency. And so that is spelled out in that institutional specialized care definition. Then within the city's, um, R1 zoning district, we would need to include this as a conditional use. Um, and so we show conditional uses, um, and we say institutional specialized care facility. We created a couple of conditions that we believe are specific to this site and would most likely limit this use fairly, um, or considerably within the city, noting the residential R1 zoning areas of our city. But minimum lot size of 2.5 acres, um, that is somewhat unique, but in order to accommodate this size building, you need approximately that much. We don't have any other R1 parcels in the city that are that large. So in theory, that limits the, the ability for this particular provision to be considered, although somebody could acquire and consolidate properties such that you could meet that requirement. We say that the building, um, square footage should not be less than 35, not greater than 40. Really, then again, defines this particular, uh, project, but again, it's not limited to this site. We're just, again, trying to create conditions. And then we talk about must comply with the site plan, uh, requirements of the city, and then also all, um, applicable local, state, federal rules and regulations. That covers all licensing that this facility either is required to have or not required to have. It's kind of a catch-all to say, if licensing isn't required for this type of facility now, if licensing does become required, or, or portion of it is required, they have to comply with that, and that's a condition of the approval. And then, and then just a couple of, um, I, I think kind of boilerplate conditions. The operation must be current all times, um, with all applicable rules, and then the use of facility, um, shall not, uh, be injurious or create nuisance to surrounding neighborhoods. And those are, those are fairly typical of conditions that we would add into a conditional use permit. Our criteria in the city's ordinance relating to conditional use permit further spells out the criteria that then the city would utilize to review and, and then approve or not approve a conditional use. And that goes in to talk about a lot more factors, um, of, of a particular use. So, that's the draft ordinance piece. We drafted this language based on the application requesting that we consider amending it, and it's hard to consider amending it without some draft language. This language might not be the final language if the city was to consider moving something forward, um, but this provides kind of a basis to talk about, and then gives the city, um, that, that, uh, the structural pieces that need to be included in the ordinance should we move forward with an amendment. So, I'm gonna leave the, the ordinance piece. I'm gonna give just a high-level overview of what they're proposing to do with the site, and then we can go into more detail as planning commission, um, deems fit. So the applicant, um, as you can see, is proposing to reuse this building. They've provided the city with a, um, exterior image of the building that shows that the exterior would be painted, um, there would be just some, some modest mo- exterior would be painted, there would be just some, some modest modifications, tuck pointing, things like that to the exterior of the building, but by and large, the building in its current form would, would remain intact. You'd see new signage and, and things like that, some sprucing up of the existing landscaping, but, but no significant improvements to the exterior portions of the building. The applicant has noted that they would work on some things on the exterior as it relates to the site, such as re-striping the parking. And then, we talk about some conditions potentially to the trash enclosure, some of the back area, and then also to the possibility of inclusion of a opaque, or of a non-opaque ornamental iron, or ornamental metal type fence, if the city would wanna see that on the exterior. So, the majority of the improvements would be to the interior of this building. Oops, I might have gone past. Yeah. Uh, there we go. And, and those would really include the construction of, or conversion of some bedroom space into showers, as well as some additional laundry machines being included on the interior. But by and large, the interior is also gonna remain the same in terms of its configuration, then with cosmetic upgrades being made primarily to the interior of the building. And so, with that, I noted that the existing building has sixty-nine beds, and the applicant is proposing to utilize the space with sixty-five bedroom spaces. So, in doing that, they would be converting some of those spaces, but ultimately utilizing the bedroom spaces for, you know, the purpose of the, the treatment that would be going on, or the, for their clients that would be within the building. So, most of the exterior improvements then that we looked at on the building as it related to site design, we look at a parking requirement, and whether or not the type of, of use of this building would meet or comply with parking. We don't, again, have a specific parking requirement for this type of use, but we do actually have one that's fairly close. We talk about hospitals, sanitary rest homes, nursing homes, and we utilize a, a parking standard. In this case, the applicant would be able to accommodate the parking, we think, associated with this facility, and, and generally comply with that, noting that it's not wholly dissimilar from the previous use. They gave us a pretty detailed breakdown of staff, and that would make up the biggest number of parking spaces. Residents of the proposed facility would be dropped off, they wouldn't have vehicles that would be parked on-site, and so, really, parking would be visitor parking and staff parking. And so, given the breakdown that we provided, we believe that it would be adequate. Now, if there was additional gatherings, or any type of function outside of just day-to-day use of that facility, the parking isn't there to accommodate larger functions at this time. And we noted that. We talk about some of the other details associated with lighting, lighting landscaping, and the trash enclosure signage. I will note that, as relates to exterior use of the facility, public safety and fire have also weighed in and provided comments. I think one of the larger comments that came out of fires review was the request by fire to potentially look at a full fire access around all sides of the building, which right now, there isn't on the south side, and so, that's something that fire recommended. It's not proposed to be accommodated in the application, but that would be something that we could talk about if that was, if this was recommended for approval, including the text amendment. The applicant also provided information to the city through a narrative, and I'm not gonna go through their complete narrative. And then, I thought, and staff had asked for just a response to the public comments that were made during the open house that they had. And I will note, you know, when this came in front of the city bef, initially, we always recommend to somebody with this type of a, type of a change in use, we always recommend that they privately and individually talk to neighboring property owners, as kind of a good neighbor thing. That's how that, uh, public open house, you know, kinda started, but we always recommend that people do it outside of the city, so it can be done on a different type of a basis than this type of a meeting, so. And, so they provided some of those responses, which I thought was helpful, at least to understand the questioning, and then, and then some of the responses. A lot of the questions that were asked are kind of outside of the planning realm, but are questions that, you know, certainly people have the, the right to ask, and, and for more information on that. A couple of the notes that I had in, in terms of the use of the building, use of the building as, you know, this retreat center means twenty-four hour care for people recovering from chemical dependencies. We asked for clarification on certain things, such as, are there gonna be outside assemblies or gatherings being requested of the city? And the answer was no assemblies or gatherings would occur to include persons outside of the residents or clients of the facility. And I think that's important, because that would mean that the building itself wouldn't have the ability to accommodate, and we capture that in a, in a potential condition, should the planning commission consider that. We also asked if there would be use of the grounds by the clients outside of the building, and it was noted by the applicant that all use of the grounds would be limited to just the interior courtyards, and so, or courtyard on the building. We noted that. The, I, I talked about the residents wouldn't have vehicles at the facility, those would be, the, all residents would be dropped off. I noted that the applicant does not currently have a facility of this size that they operate. That was one of our questions. We were looking for, you know, other examples that we could physically go look at. They did note that they have similar residential homes that they utilize for this purpose. I, I noted again, then, that this facility currently does not require state or federal licensing, or county licensing. So, there might be aspects of the facility itself, such as food service prep, or things that are licensed by Department of Health, or other things, but the actual use of the facility by the applicant for treatment of the chemical dependency are, is not a regulated use, but we captured a condition, you know, that if it were to be, or if there's a portion of the practice that is regulated, that they be required to, to meet those requirements and have the appropriate licenses. I noted a, you know, entire list of conditions that we would recommend, should the planning commission wanna consider this further. And then, I also noted some of the, some of the things like signage isn't a part of this approval. They would be upgrading the site lighting to a compliant lighting. I noted that their photometric plant still doesn't meet the requirements, we'd have to get that, but those are details that we could work on, if there was a recommendation by planning commission to move that. Again, most of the site is not proposing to be changed or altered, so, when we looked at the site itself, we noted parking lot striping, we noted that, you know, there's some minor cleanup and things. We, as staff, at least in reviewing that site, didn't find, you know, a huge void in, say, the landscaping, or something like that, where there would be, you know, significant benefit to an upgrade, other than just maintenance and mulch and weeding and things like that, so. We note that no future expansion of the building, or accessory buildings would be permitted without other approvals. That's a typical condition we would place on a conditional use permit, and then, we talk about violation of the conditional use permit conditions in that. Again, we need to consider the text amendment, and the language of the ordinance, and whether or not the city wants to move forward with that. If that was something we wanna move forward with, then we would need to consider the conditional use permit and site plan review as something that we could get into more details on, so. I'll yield to the planning commission, answer any questions that I can, or provide more information.
Okay. Um, do we have to make the decision about the zoning before the public hearing?
No. Either way, you have to have the public hearing.
That, okay. I needed that clarified. I thought so, but yes. Okay. What we'll do is, we'll open the public hearing, and when you, when you do have a question or a comment, if you can come up to the, what's that called?
Podium.
Podium. Thank you. A podium, next to Mark here, and with your name, and, and your address, and let's keep the questions or the comments like, to like three or four minutes at the most, okay? And, we'll have, if you've got a comment or a question, let's just leave it at one. So, ask all the questions when you're up here the first time. And, so, we're gonna do that. The, the applicant, and I'm sure several of, of the other members of Serenity Village are in the audience, and if there's something that gets asked, you can respond. What we'll, what we'll do is listen, get the questions and concerns, and then, after the hearing, public hearing part is closed, the planning commission will go through all of the information, and, and any of the questions that we've had, as we've gone through this ourselves, and, and then we'll go from there. So, it's seven thirty-five, no, seven?
Six forty.
Six forty. Six forty, and we'll open the public hearing. And so, whoever has the first comment or question, please feel free to come on up.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Eric Schultz. I first heard about this from something my wife saw on social media, and didn't really look anything into it, until we started actually kinda pursuing what was going on. After kind of gathering some facts and information for myself, and my wife kinda talking with it, or about it, I kinda reached out to a few neighbors and other people in the community, and asked them if they heard anything about this, and one person out of twelve said no, they had heard nothing. And every single person had a strong opinion, that they would absolutely like more information about what's going on. And before you make a decision, I would propose that you put the applicant's request into the form of a question, and put it on the ballot for November, and let all of your residents have an opportunity to give their opinion on it. And if that's not an option, I would ask that you put a mailing to every resident in the city of Maple Plain, that this will affect with all the information, so they are at least aware.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you give your address?
Oh, my name is Eric Schultz, and I live at fifty-nine fifteen Three Oaks Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Andrew Schroeder. I live at forty-three sixty El Rata Lane in Medina, so just up the street. It's my privilege and honor to speak to you this evening, as a member of this community, and as a sergeant of the Minneapolis Police Department. So, my disclaimer is, what I, what I'm gonna share is certainly not the views of the Minneapolis Police Department, it's my own experience. I have worked in Minneapolis for about fourteen years. I currently am assigned to the Gun Investigation Unit, it's partnered with ATF. We work gun-related crimes, shootings. I previously worked in narcotics for a significant period of time. I worked for the Metro Transit Police Department in a narcotics division also. So, I have a ton of experience with narcotics, and also personally to me, I've had a brother struggle with methamphetamine addiction, and has been through treatment several times, now successfully and, and doing great. One thing from my experience working in the biggest city in the state is, crime is out of control, as everyone knows, right? You see it on the news, shootings are up fifty percent in the city just this year. Drug crime is, is fueling a lot of that. And what happens, at least in Hennepin County from my experience, is when people get arrested and convicted, and oftentimes, the courts wanna help, right? We just don't wanna throw people in jail, and I support that, and the problem is that a lot of the times, the courts require treatment, right? You have to go through some chemical dependency evaluation, and there's just no spots available. In Minneapolis, there's like a, I think it's like a four-month waiting list from the last person that told me he was waiting to go through, and it was either go to treatment or go to prison. Well, what do you think you're gonna pick, right? And you have to successfully complete the treatment program as part of a sentence. I've had the privilege in my job to work specifically with the applicant in Serenity Homes, and I've done that in ways of bringing people that have found their way to me, bringing them to Serenity Village, and I've been able to get them food, get them jobs, get them housing, get them treatment, and, and it's just been a real blessing to me, my department, and to the community where I serve as a police officer. It was funny, as you spoke, sir, you used the word, "I'm gonna provide a high-level overview" several times, and you did a great job at that. That's exactly what Serenity Village does. They provide a high-level service to, to the community, and to their clients, and they do it with integrity and a foundation that I respect, and I think that anyone in the community would also respect. Obviously, working in Minneapolis, we have the most treatment centers than anywhere else, right? I can tell you from my own experience is, we don't get called to them. We do very seldomly, for maybe, you know, someone slipped and fell, but it's not like the type of crimes, or people committing crimes in the treatment center. It's just, they kinda contain themselves. So, I guess, I'll just close with this. You know, I think, as a member of the community, why wouldn't you want a treatment center in, you know, next door to your house? Well, I can think of a lot of things, and before being a cop, I would've thought that, oh, there's gonna be a bunch of drug addicts living next door to me, right? That's what you think. But, what if someone falls off the wagon and gets back using dope? Well, I can tell you one thing, if they don't complete it, and they're not following the program, they're not gonna stay in Maple Plain, they're gonna come back to the city, right? You're not gonna see people wandering around the streets like zombie drug addicts. It's just not, it's just not what happens in rural treatment settings. And I guess I'll just close with this, why wouldn't you want it? Don't we all wanna like do good in our community and help people? You know, the world's out of control, and I'd be blessed to have this treatment center here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Amy Alworth, and...
Thank you for your address.
Eight-two-five Baker Park Road is a rental for us. We also have property in, on Homestead Trail in Medina, and in Independence off Turner Road. So, I wanna start out by saying that I'm a community member here. We, my husband and I have lived in this area since nineteen ninety-one. All three of our kids went to Orano Schools, and I love this area. This is our home. It's beautiful, I, there's not enough I can say about how much we love and actually give back to these communities. I also wanna say that, as a resident here, I understand if everyone, if, if people are afraid, worried about something like Serenity, Serenity Village coming into our community. I understand that, and I would probably be in that camp if I hadn't actually started supporting Serenity Village, because I was so impressed. And, I share your concerns, but I'm gonna say this from the bottom of my heart. Pastor Jeff, who heads Serenity Village, not only talks the talk, but he walks the walk, and I've never seen that in any other... Pastor Jeff, who had Serenity Village, not only talks the talk, but he walks the walk, and I've never seen that in any other church I've ever been to. It is incredible. Um, as attested by the police officer, I heard him speak at the last fundraiser, not only him, but the mayor of Crystal. So, if you have any concerns about Serenity Village, then call the mayor of Crystal because she was up attesting to the integrity of this program with the police officer, okay? And, um, uh, the, Serenity Village provides food for the hungry, um, recovery for those afflicted. Um, I, I, I just, I can't say enough about this place. Anyway, I'm gonna finish. Sorry. Um, I guess I'm just gonna finish by saying I understand where you're all coming from. But if you, if you just take a little time to Google Serenity Village, take a little time to go, um, to talk to this officer, to talk to the mayor of Crystal, you might have a better idea. And I don't know what's gonna happen, but I just want everyone to know that this is a quality place, and I, I surely hope that people are respectful in their comments about this situation because they deserve a lot of respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, uh, Pete Kitting, and I live at fifty-four thirty-five Main Street West. Um, I've lived in the city most of my whole life, except for two years. Um, my parents worked for the city. Um, they were both law enforcement officers in this city, and, um, I came back here because I cared about the community, and I care about the people that, that live in this neighborhood, 'cause I grew up in that neighborhood, and, um, I think it's great what they do, um, but I don't really want to take that risk, and, you know, um, talking with people that, uh, or talking with my family who, who served this community and worked as police officers in this community, why take the risk? And there's a lot of elderly people that live behind that place who I've talked to and have the same concerns. Um, so, that's what I gotta say about it.
Thank you.
My name's Ron Stephanhagen. My wife and I live at five-four-six-four Bryant Street, and I'm one of those elderly people that Pete's talking about. Um, we oppose the, uh, the, what's being, what's being offered. Um, one of the main concerns, um, what the, what the mayor of Crystal was in favor of was single-family dwellings. That's what Serenity Village has. That's what they offer people right now, and they do a good job of it, but they've never attempted anything on this scale. They don't have any retreat centers, and we don't know if it's gonna be successful. And if we change our zoning, um, what happens if they leave? It's not successful and they have to leave, and now it's zoned for that kind of use. And we don't, I, I don't know if the city knows what could happen. I don't know what could happen, and it could be very bad. Um, also, as far as traffic, um, maybe the residents won't bring vehicles, but every Saturday, they said they're, they can have, uh, guests. So, if there's sixty people there, they, half of them have guests, that's, that's a lot of vehicles, and I, it sounds like it's gonna be full with just the staff, so that would be a lot of vehicles every Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Carrie Seidel at fifty-four hundred Bryant Street, so I'm not one of the elderly ones, but I do share the same concerns. My family just moved in, um, less than a year ago, and we would potentially have rethought that if we knew that this was the facility that was down the road. I echo many of Ron's same concerns. I did quite a bit of Googling and reading all of their materials on their website about their current programs, how they work, wondering how that was gonna transition into this larger scale, the number of residents, the number of people visiting on the weekends, um, and just heard from some other neighbors. We weren't able to...